Buddy, it's Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This is, I'm Don Swiker, this is Jackson County Board of Supervisors, you will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have Mike Sinus on my left, we got Nen on my right, we got Bjorn, IT, Lisa from the auditors, Lian in the back. First up on our docket is Jayden Shekel from the County Engineers Office. Good morning.
Good morning. Just wanted to give you guys an update, since it's been a few weeks since I've been in here. Last week, we submitted our applications for the fiscal year twenty-five raise grants, there was two of them, one for Iron Bridge and one for, another one for roadside sake stuff, which is three ninety-fifth Avenue. Those were both submitted last week and won't know until late June whether we are awarded or not, but just wanted to give an update that they have been submitted. There was some changes that need to be done to the application with the change in administration going from the Biden administration to Trump, they changed some criteria in their notice of funding opportunities, so the consultant had to kind of revamp some things, because some things were struck, some things were added. They did decrease the amount of funding available to, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. They increased funding quite a bit, actually, was from one point five billion dollars to a hundred and fifty million, like, they cut like ninety percent of it. That's not to say they won't add some back in, because as they maybe prioritize which projects, because there's a whole slew, nationwide, there's a whole slew of projects from, who knows what they range from, but as of right now, they decreased the funding by quite a bit, but ours still scored very well, because ours wasn't relying upon some of the, didn't matter what administration, what's a deteriorating bridge. It wasn't like geared anything towards some of the environmental stuff, like electric vehicles or whatever, it was, so ours still scored well, but just to make aware, I guess, that unfortunately, they decreased the funding and there's some unknowns there, but okay, you can't get money if you don't apply, I guess, either.
Reference to three ninety-fifth, you say you won't find out till June, and if you do get, if we do get awarded that timeframe as far as, do we then proceed with trying to buy right away and doing, yeah?
So if we, my plan is if we find out we did not get the award for three ninety-fifth would be to, we wouldn't realign anything, because it would take, I mean, we could look at it, I guess, still, but it would all come out of our FM account, then, which is kind of already allocated for upcoming projects after that, but we would still prob, I would, be my intent to still do a road rehab project, like maintain the asphalt that's there, whether it's a mill and overlay or full depth reclamation or what have you, but just wouldn't be wide flattening out the slopes, adding paved shoulders, because we don't really, I mean, we certainly could have just take a lot of money that we probably need for other projects, but take a look at it once we figure out whether or not we got awarded.
There, are those two projects kind of competing against each other?
No.
They're separate completely?
Yep. And with the bridge, if, with Iron Bridge, if we don't get the raise award for it, we still can make the replacement happen, and it is my intent to still do that. But we got, we called, last year, we got the two million dollars from the DOT for that bridge, so you know, that doesn't cover half of what that bridge is expected to cost, but with the yearly allocation we get from the DOT and where we're sitting at our funds, they allow you to accumulate up to a certain amount of years and then also borrow ahead. We, where we be sitting with it, we could make Iron Bridge happen, so it is my intent to, you know, the bridge isn't getting any better by doing nothing to it. We got two million dollars that we just can't hold forever, we'll have, the clock will start ticking, so it's my intent to still proceed with that bridge, but if we get the raise grant, make a lot of breathing room. And then I guess on, we can jump to the next part of the session with the Morehead Bridge, because it kind of ties into that. An update on the Morehead Bridge is our consulting, our inspection consultant is still in the process of evaluating stuff, we actually have a site visit this week to look at the cords, the actual trust itself, they're working with our contractor on like, okay, to get more of a refined construction cost of what a repair would take, so we're still in that process of determining. I think I did relay, last time I was in here, that I did submit that Morehead Bridge for the County Bridge Construction Fund to the DOT, which is the two million dollars for Iron Bridge, and two years ago, it was two million dollars for Channelworth, I did submit that, that one, we will know by the end of March, I believe it is, or sometime in March, we'll know whether or not we are awarded anything for that. So as that relates to the Iron Bridge one, complaining all these scenarios in my head here. Don't get the raise grant for Iron Bridge, we can make Iron Bridge happen. But, and if we, we don't get the raise grant and we don't get the County Bridge Fund for Morehead, that's gonna push Morehead, like, we just won't be able to make Morehead, the replacement of Morehead happen, but so that's where maybe start looking, okay, we really should look at a repair then to get it back open. Scenarios, if we don't get the raise grant, but we get the County Bridge Fund, depending on how much, then it really makes Morehead a very realistic possibility to get replaced. Just due to where that bridge is located on a gravel road, you know, there's, if, say we get two million dollars for it, that cost would go quite a ways for the Morehead Bridge, as opposed to Iron Bridge, so if we don't get raise grant, but do get County Bridge Fund, there's a chance Morehead could still be in the program, we'll just have to look at things. Vice, and on the flip side, if we do get the raise grant, but don't get the County Bridge Fund, we could still probably make it happen, because the money we would have saved from Iron Bridge, that can be allocated to Morehead. And in a perfect world, if we get both funding sources, we're moving.
It'd be interesting to see if there is a repair possibility and what that would be.
So it's just kind of evaluating all our options right now, and just really, a lot will dictate upon what we find out with the County Bridge Fund, and what a possible repair would cost, because with the repair too, there would be, the consultant have to actually do plans and specs for it, because it's not just like a pull this repair off the shelf, here, just do this fix, it's a, you're talking a custom design for that repair, so there would be a consulting fee as well, because that's out of our office's capability. But, again, we're still in that determining phase, this is what make the public aware. Been a month since the bridge has been closed, we're still in the process, it just takes time, but we are.
We certainly have to evaluate what a repair cost would be compared, yeah, I mean, what are you gonna do repairing, it's still fifteen tons, so then when a semi goes over, we're still in trouble.
Well, it's not supposed to, but it would make the world a lot less complicated when we do Channelworth, yes, we had some access across.
And so I'm, you know, there's also that thought too, okay, just say in theory, we get, I don't want to jinx ourselves, but just say in theory, we will get two million dollars for Morehead. That replacement can happen then, but you're three years out, by the time you get your environmental clearance design, but you're three years out, so thirty-six months. What is the cost of a repair for Morehead, combined, or not just repair, but the consulting fee itself, that total cost? If you, you could divide that total cost by thirty-six months to get a price per month for what it would take to get that bridge open, if, you know, to get it open in the meantime, it totally can get replaced.
Plus, you gotta take actual construction time out of there, that thirty-six months, because it ain't gonna be just, they show up in a week, it's fixed and it's.
It could be a full construction season, right?
You know, that, that time you're gaining, isn't, might not be all that advantageous for the expense that might occur, so, we'll know more by July.
Yeah, or March even, really, July, ideally, we get all funding sources and, and we keep looking at other ones to do, but just gotta play out all these different scenarios and just to kind of have a plan, but right now, we're still in a waiting period right now.
So with the timeframe that you just said, we're, we're asking the public to be very patient.
Correct, yes, because there's been a few questions this week of, where is it at with it, and explain where, just like I explained to you, it's only been a month since it's been closing, I guess, probably been a long month for those that it deeply affects, but it's stuff, it takes time for some of this, it's not just, especially the repairs, again, that's something you can pull off the shelf, it's really gotta analyze stuff, because they're putting the consultant firm is putting their liability and license on the line too, because they don't want it to fail, but so.
Right.
But just keep everybody updated, that's what we're looking at, we're not, haven't forgotten about it, we're moving along.
Like you say, it's a blessing and a curse to a river, it's a past, so our county, and you know, when you're talking two to five million dollars, or two to six million dollars per bridge, and the fact that we're entertaining the possibility of doing three of those bridge river crossings in the next three years is kind of a big deal, but again, you're talking a lot of dollars, a lot of time, and even more patience, so that's all we're asking, it's just be patient, we're trying to get them done.
I appreciate all the effort you guys are putting into trying to find funding and.
Those are what we just take to get the bridges replaced, it takes the funding, and luckily, we've been successful for the County Bridge Construct Fund the last two years, I hope that continues. With that being said, you know, when we, since we have been awarded the two consecutive years, that's just, it's not like we're working any magic, it's simply based on the scoring system, so it just shows that.
Yeah, just let you know the condition of our bridges and why we're.
Pretty simple, we got some bad roads, we got a lot of them.
You know, hell, we got the one north of Preston we need to do, it's a dope, Damon, Damon Bridge, you know?
And that one does score very well, but it's just, okay, if we, if we would apply for that, say Morehead would have stayed open, or nothing happened, it stays just like it was prior. Okay, if we would have tried to apply for Damon, okay, we would have got, say if we would have got the two million dollars, it's still gonna take additional funding to get that one, and we don't have that, especially with, we're making Iron Bridge happen, so it's like, hey, why just submit it to get two million dollars just for just not to be able to do it, so, when, and that bridge isn't as bad as some of the ones we've been submitting up to this point, so.
See, I look at the bridges like E seventeen, right there at Edge Gate, that really narrow bridge, Canton Bridge, you know, that are just very restrictive in their width. Those would be nice, but, you know, baby steps. So, the problem you get is when you get, as you do these bridges, the ones left are just the more expensive, and they get harder and harder and harder to do, so.
They are, because our other ones that are not river bridges are also not getting better, by letting them, we gotta tackle those too, so it's.
All right, any other good news?
Nope, that's all I had, I guess.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we got visitors and citizens, anybody would like to address the board, you're more than welcome, come up, introduce yourself, and, yeah?
My name is Jess Commanders, so I live south of Lamont, twenty years of healthcare experience, last eight as a physician assistant, and just been elected to go on to the Jackson County Board of Health, and I'm looking forward to be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
Well, appreciate very much that you want to serve, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Yeah?
Good morning.
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 But they just told me that there'll be maybe a public meeting, hearing in March, sorry, Jen Coach, good morning. K U T S T H, and I just wanted to, I had prepared something to come in and speak this morning, so I'm just gonna roll with it, if you don't mind, and I appreciate you taking the time. So, good morning, I'm Jen Coach, I'm a property owner in Jackson County, and just because I think we're all a little familiar with the situation, you have the rare opportunity to fine tooth a responsible and fair wind ordinance. I've gone over it, I know understand that no one's gonna be happy all the way through, and I appreciate the work that the zoning board has been doing, far more than I have been involved with time-wise. But I just want to say, I just have two major concerns, I just want to revisit with you this morning, and, you know, despite the large setback from the scenic byways, the setback from property lines of now has been increased to two thousand feet, we're sort of moving up, I think, in the right direction. Albeit that's more than twelve hundred or fifteen hundred feet, is still a risk to nearby non-participating landowners. I have previously provided documentation from a court case out of Ohio that has to do with the turbine manufacturer, that's Nordex. In their health and safety manual, the turbine manufacturers, not the developer, but the manufacturers, their own setback for workers during a thunderstorm is one kilometer, and that's three thousand two hundred and eighty feet. Henry County, just as starting their own zoning meetings around creating a wind ordinance, and they had just updated their own setbacks from property lines to three thousand two hundred and eighty feet. And I would really encourage Jackson County to consider that at the bare minimum. That is just a setback for a thunderstorm, that's not including their fire setbacks, or anything else that they have in their catastrophe range. I would implore you to change that setback to one kilometer at the minimum, or consider adding verbiage that any applicant or developer should provide, or shall provide, an unredacted health and safety manual, and shall adhere to all setbacks stated with them. We have had our meetings in Clinton County, as you're aware, I have actually asked one of the key developers who's been part of those meetings directly if they would adhere to the turbine manufacturers' health and safety manual, and they have basically said that they would rather work with the local community to do that, I think that's incorrect and dishonest, and also very dangerous. If they're not going to adhere to the own manufacturer's settings and statements and requirements, then we should be also, I think, as a county and a community, respecting those same setbacks, et cetera, that the manufacturers provided. And then finally, you know, the current draft allows for a noise average of fifty decibels. That's an average, averages are dangerous, because that's not how things should be measured, really need to be looking at peak times. We've been working with Robert Rand, he is an esteemed IMCE certified sound acoustician, he has forty-five years of experience. Now, there's no necessarily no doctors of sound, but if there was a doctor of sound, he would be it. He is now sought after by counties and townships across the country and in Canada to review sound analysis submitted by developers. So you guys have currently in the ordinance, they're proposing a sound analysis be done, of course, everyone across the board has that. But they're allowing for fifty decibels, and that's actually pretty harmful to humans. So the fifty decibel number comes from a study back in the seventies, that was for urban areas, not rural quiet countryside like Jackson or Clinton Counties. The people who actually came out with those findings have gone back and said, hey, we're talking about an urban area, not like a rural area. So that's where the fifty decibel number kind of comes from, it's not an arbitrary number necessarily, but in this case, it's not measured properly for our community. You know, I just want to say, remind you that I provided several emails and documentation with more conservative numbers, the Clinton County Board of Health has signed off on this letter for very conservative numbers, and I've actually, after discussing with Robert Rand, who has been consulting us, and we have been, I have been, we have been paying him to help us go through our documents and such for noise and sound, because I am no professional, but I have learned something from him every single time I talk to him, he's greatly respected. And we have actually had meetings with our officials in Clinton County, and he has been very good about explaining how sound should be measured, whether that's the audible, which we hear, or the inaudible, which is what you don't hear, but rather you almost feel. And one of those things is that sound should be measured from within a house, a neighboring house, not necessarily the property lines, that's how the sound really travels. Noise is an annoyance, the World Health Organization has decreed that, and we respect that, and can impact our physical and mental well-being. The inaudible noise, the pulsations, the varimetric pressurized pulsations, those affect our bodies on a cellular level, they harm us at our root mitochondria level, it's, it's pretty wild, and it's not crazy, it's science-based, and we have evidence for that, and I provided that to Clinton County, I provided to the Board of Health, I prevented, provided to our own Board of Health, so Jessica, you have some catching up to do. But I just want to say, please consider adding a more protective decibel range of forty decibels or lower. And there should be some language in there for mitigation procedures, and if they cannot meet those mitigation procedures, then the turbines should be turned off. That is all I have to say, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else willing to address the board today? Nobody on the lot, Brian, or do you want to address the board today? For people.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Yep. I don't see Nathan, so. Becky, I guess we're down to Lisa, you wanna?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five work session, and the January twenty twenty-five special election candidates meeting, as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I'll make that motion, second.
A motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve minutes of the January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five work session, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes, as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair and auditor signatures on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of January twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents.
I would move to approve, it's a good number.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to accept and place on file and authorize chair and auditor signatures on the county recorder's report of fees collected during the month of January twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Bellevue Golf Club, Inc., at thirty-two, two ninety-two, three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue, Bellevue, effective April first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve the renewal of the Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Bellevue Golf, Inc., at thirty-two, two ninety-second, two ninety-second, three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue, effective August, April first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
It's all gonna happen more today, thank you.
Becky, you're up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
A couple of staffing changes for you within our sheriff's department. So Molly Heran has been a full-time corrections officer with the sheriff's department for just under four years, she has decided to take less hours at the sheriff's department, she will, she has gone to a part-time position and resigned her full-time position. So for retrokeeping purposes, I would ask for a motion to approve Molly Heran going from full-time to part-time effective January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I would move to approve.
Second thought.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve Molly Heran going from full-time to part-time jail, correct? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then Betsy Swisher, who has been with the department for just under a year, has been promoted to the full-time position. I would ask for a motion to approve Betsy Swisher going from part-time to full-time effective January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve Betsy Swisher going from part-time to full-time, as the effective date stated, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And Tracy Frederickson, who is a current full-time corrections officer, has been promoted to the shift lead, which has been vacated by Molly Heran by going to part-time. That does come with a seventy-five cent per hour premium pay for every hour that they work. I would ask for a motion to approve Tracy Frederickson being appointed shift lead effective January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, at a seventy-five percent hour premium pay, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
You're saying seventy-five cents?
Seventy-five cents, did I say percent?
Yeah.
Molly was receiving this, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, for that position.
She will lose that, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve Tracy Frederickson being appointed shift lead and receiving seventy-five cent shift differential, or stipend there in, starting at date specified, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And then the sheriff did fill one of the vacant bailiff positions that we have out here for our security kiosks. I would ask for a motion to approve hiring of Russell Long as a part-time bailiff effective February fourth, twenty twenty-six, at an hourly rate of twenty-five thirty-five, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve Russ Long as a part-time bailiff, starting on February fourth, as stated, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tip of renewal. I did send information on the contract out, that Caroche has provided a renewal for us. The services have stayed the same, as far as what services they offer, as far as updating policies, procedures, the assessments, privacy, security risks, and those good things, there is a slight increase in this contract for this year, however, like I said, we have not, we have been at the same rate with them since twenty twenty-one. We initially came on to Caroche because they were the providers of the requirements for their region. I did look at alternatives this year, I don't think it's a year to make a change with a company that provides it for us, with the region dissolving, and possibly some changes and opportunity for their employees to pick up some things, there might be an option to shift from a full agreement with a company in the future. But for the renewal for February to February, I think it's in our best interest to renew with Caroche.
So we've always renewed on a yearly basis, we never had like a three-year or anything like that to say, and I guess, I don't know what the percentage is, but it was substantial enough to say if it was divided in three years, it would probably, much less a percentage, but again, there was no warning, and I suppose, and we have to comply.
We have to comply. And, and the thing about it is, like I said, our policy and procedures that don't affect the offices so much, just the jail, it's the mental health, all the people that deal with billing and stuff like that, it's two hundred and ninety-three pages, there isn't anybody here that can keep up with health and human services requirements for what's gotta be complied with at this point in time. So it's a huge value to have them, they're the ones that continually have to go through those policies and make sure the language that we're using is updated in our privacy practices, and notices that we have to serve and the signatures that we have to get and all those things, so.
I would like a two or three-year, but I.
I personally appreciate the online courses and things like that versus the, what I called in the military death by PowerPoint. All day, sitting there staring at the screen while somebody talks, and a very dynamic and entertaining tone.
Did you pass the test?
Get the certificate.
I would move to approve that contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve the February, or the Caroche contract for fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
You betcha.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Becky, Ms. Lori? You are up. There you are. Again, aye.
Anyway, I come bearing gifts, I told you I was gonna gift wrap this thing.
Wow, the wind ordinance?
Yep. So, anyway, at our January twentieth meeting, the zoning commission made a motion to send the wind energy conversion system ordinance final draft to the board of supervisors after revisions noted and punctuation grammar are corrected. The motion carried, all seven members voted in the affirmative. And you, can I see what she sent you, because we think that it was something else.
I noticed it was a state of blank.
This is not ours, so she's gonna be printing off what I sent her this morning, that was from another company with some suggested, some suggested changes about how we're taking property rights away from the farmer that wants to have a wind turbine, that's what you got, that was just information from them.
Is that from the company, there's an email we got from a company stating they sent us like an example ordinance, I think we got that yesterday, or?
Okay, they sent it to you too?
Yeah.
Okay, because I said, no, I sent it after I responded, thanks, it would have been nice a year, a year and a half ago for this information, but but at the same time, their, their most concern was about small people like might want to put turbine.
I think we have one up north here, don't we?
We have one, yeah, we have.
So the only thing I seen in that was the height, maybe?
Correct.
I mean, from a hundred to a hundred and.
They were saying it would be a fourteen feet or something.
Does aviation have something to say about that, I mean?
None at that height.
Distance to the airport or anything like that?
We'd have to look at our, at our airport ordinance, but I don't think that would, would hit the height. It's still.
We do have one in place for personal, not commercial type windmill, windmill, we call it windmill.
We, we don't, we have the stipulation that they become commercial, see, commercial, wind, wind energy conversion systems after a hundred feet, that's what we have in there. We're gonna be putting the regular, like, for the personal use, one in our regular ordinance.
Okay. And, and the height restriction on that neck, but not that it's bearing right now, or consequently. I mean, there was a little difference in what I read from what the gentleman sent and what we have.
We have a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a hundred feet, so.
So what we're looking for right now is, it says discussion of possible action, propose a wind ordinance, the only thing we can do right now is, first step is setting a public hearing.
Yeah, our hearings, multiple, yeah.
But we're not really discussing the.
Wind ordinance as it's presented.
Right.
Correct, there's public hearings that we need to get scheduled. Or you guys need to get scheduled.
What was the conflict on the twenty-fifth? What was the conflict on the twenty-fifth as Luann stepped out of here?
I had a, they, they were taking a doodle poll for I have, I volunteered to be on the strategic planning for ECI. And that was one of their meetings at ten o'clock that day or noon or something. I can't remember. So again, uh, I mean, there, there are important things lying here that we need to take care of. Unless you wanna change that meeting, our meeting.
Or do we have it in the evening? The twenty, the twenty-fifth.
Can, can I just make a suggestion? Well, I do have to be careful on the twenty, now the twenty-fifth I'm good, cause it's not the Monday. Uh. The, the meetings that you have, do they have, I, I'd like to see maybe one during this meeting, but not all of them to make it convenient for. Citizens to, to come. So yes, an evening meeting would be great. And would you guys be opposed to staffing them within the same week or, uh? Like three meetings in one week or?
Well, the ordinance to do the three readings, they're gonna. The three readings will take place. I think it'd be best if we did them one, a meeting for three weeks. And that gives Brittany enough time to put it in the paper and discuss possible interactions or questions, all that kind of stuff. So people, the, the new, the word gets out. You know, and, uh. From there, you know, public hearings, whether we have one or maybe two, I don't know. But I think the first one. Do it on the February twenty-fifth at like six P M. Something like that with that.
Do you wanna schedule the next one after that? And maybe we can get them both on the same public notice? If we. Potentially.
So can we publish on the same, yeah, the same one that we're gonna have on the twenty-fifth?
I, I know we were talking about it. I don't remember what we came up with. Would we be able to stack two on one, one notice?
Why can't you just notice all when our, three of our dates are, then they're out there?
But because of our publication times with the paper, we can't be further out than twenty days from the date of the notice.
Okay, what's twenty days from now? Make that your last meeting.
It won't, the way we have to turn it in, so even for us to turn it in. For the, for Friday to be published on the twelve.
So in setting one today, if we set it for the twenty-fifth, that would be twenty-one days in advance. Which technically would fall outside the four and twenty.
You're not gonna publish. Publish is the twelve.
So right now we can only do the twenty-fifth. We can't do the week after.
We'd have to give that on for, you can set it now and then. If you want it and then get it out for our publication.
So we have to publish, publish, publicize it again?
It would be a new hearing. So you'd have to publish it again. Cause you can't publish it too far in advance or too close to the.
So this is not one of these that we could have the public hearing and wait the second or third?
You can.
There is no waving a second thirty. We're only required to have a public hearing. We have to have three readings of the ordinance. We do not read the ordinance, actually read the whole ordinance. Hopefully everybody's doing that before they get there. We can discuss anything we want during that time. And you can waive depending on the controversial nature of the ordinance. You can waive the reading, the time requirement and do them all at the same time if you so choose. If I understand it correctly. But it's better in something like this that there is a lot of public interest that we have more than one. Just so everybody that says, I didn't know. Um, can maybe get one more chance.
Just so you know, I will, the, the goal is to get. Um, our board, this draft to the website today.
So are you only discussing the wind ordinance at night or are you having your regular board meeting?
No, just, just a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the wind ordinance. We're still having our regular meeting.
So, I mean, we can still discuss that. Right? I mean, we can discuss when we're gonna have our regular meeting yet, but we're gonna have the public hearing that night.
But you wanna do your.
If you wanna change our regular meeting, we can still do that.
That's why I was just asking.
Haven't discussed it, I guess.
Why would we change it?
Cause I have a conflict.
Oh, at ten o'clock?
On the twenty.
On the twenty-fifth?
AM in the morning, yes.
Maybe they, maybe they should have kept that in mind when they strategically planned their. Cause evidently nobody else is in consideration.
And like I said, my, my priorities is here with Jackson County.
We can keep it light that day. Or start at eight-thirty?
Well, I'm here. I was gonna suggest doing that first reading during your meeting on that Tuesday.
Had our public hearing yet.
But no, you wouldn't need to do your public hearing first, cause you can do your reading first. That way there's something to do a public hearing about.
The public hearing is the presentation to the public to give them the last chance to speak. And then from there, we can do the readings thereafter. So. I would say. Well, I can't.
So, yeah.
I'd make a motion to set up our public hearing for the twenty fifth at six P M. In that though, where are we going to?
I would say down in the community room. Downstairs.
I would say at least here at the courthouse.
That the community room downstairs works better. We tried doing one in the, uh, courtroom. Oh my gosh, it is just really tough. To. Project our visuals on a wall and. It is not user friendly. So that, and then two for the, for the stick, you know, for the, I don't know, tennis we've been getting. We're, we're not, we should be good with that room.
So this one clear. We're setting just one public hearing.
Right.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve setting a public hearing. To for the, the wind ordinance, the, the windmill ordinance for February twenty-fifth, six P M in the community room downstairs of the courthouse. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Anything else for us?
That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, boss told me to keep you guys moving here, so.
Alright, um. Still don't see Nate? Move on to Luann.
Calendar, we'll start with the calendar this week. Um, at eleven o'clock this morning, right after the board meeting will be the Green Island Drainage District's annual meeting for all of you. Um, I assume that will last not much more than a half hour and then we would have time for a budget work session after that, if you'd like to. Seven o'clock tonight is a board of health meeting, um, in the credit room for Nan. Wednesday, February fifth, there is an R T A meeting at nine A M in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. And tentatively it would be, um, a Wednesday's our possible meeting day, but I haven't received any confirmation of that.
There's also annual board meeting that one of us will be attending.
Uh, Thursday, February sixth, from nine to twelve, we're having a budget work session. For all of you. Um, at ten o'clock, we'll have the bid opening on the courthouse chiller. For all of you, and I'm not quite sure how we're gonna manage that. I told Jeff to talk to you about how you wanted to do that. At six P M Thursday night is the conference board meeting for all of you, uh, downstairs in the credit room. Monday, February tenth, seven thirty A M is an early childhood IO executive meeting by Zoom for Nan. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February eleventh at nine A M. And that afternoon at three thirty will tentatively be from a Coqueta River Watershed. Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Don. Business I have today is all about appointments. I am looking for, um, discussion, possible action on. The reappointment to the board of health. Of Dr. Geraldine Bybee. With expiration date of twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. We did not realize when we made the appointment last week that we had the option to do that.
I'll make that motion.
I would second it.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve the reappointment of Dr. Joe Bybee to the. Hospital Board of Health. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, I'm also looking for, um. Motion. To accept with regrets. The resignations of Joyce Rains after six years and Ann Bernard Hoff after two years. From the Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve Ann Hoff to the Historic Preservation Commission. Oh resignation, resignation, sorry.
Don't say it, Ann.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Send a layer of thanks and appreciation for their service.
I'm also looking for discussion, possible action on the reappointment. Um, of Jacob Ollert to the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, for a three-year term to expire twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to reappoint Jacob Ollert to the Historic Preservation Commission. As it's discussed, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Posting our openings. We have several boards and commissions, uh, appointments that are still open. And I mean, I know we advertise in the paper and on the radio and such. Do we need to do some social media type thing? I know the chamber offered to put it on their site also.
They did. We might saw it on there.
Um, I, I just think we get more interest. People have a tendency to read that a little more than, than the paper or listen to K M Q sometimes. I don't know. Maybe it's a generational thing. I don't know that either, but, uh. You know, we sure appreciate people applying and serving. And it's just hard to get, get to them and know that, well, I didn't know it was happening like Doc said, you know. I get it, but if you don't read the paper and you don't listen to the radio, we don't know how to get to you. We're not gonna send flyers out, you know, so. Uh, it, it, we don't have a platform.
We do not have like a Facebook platform.
Or is there a spot on the website? Not an overall county one. We have, individual offices have their own pages. On the new website, is there a, a spot where we could list?
And there is, and again, people don't go to that very much is to see what everybody else is doing in work. They're interested in everybody else's business but our own, but you know.
But you're good helping set up a permanent site for our vacancy publications. And if you go to the Jackson County website and do a search for boards, it'll take you to the page and there's a link there to see the vacancies. There's a link for an application and all the boards are listed on that page. So if you want any information by any of those boards, you just scroll down and click. On the board you're interested in, it will give you all the information you want as well as a listing of the current members.
Is that listed under the Jack, Board of Supervisors page or whatever?
It is, but it's, it's actually easier to just do a search for boards. But it is under, it is under Board of Supervisor, but I think you have to hit a button called Boards and Commissions.
Well, it's also on the homepage, correct? As far as boards and commissions, we've got under.
It's under Board of Supervisors, that button. At this point.
So like when there's a vacancy, how long are we leaving? It open because if I'm not mistaken, we have like the zoning board, board had a vacancy.
Correct. And, and. If I didn't fill the vacancy for what I published in December in the paper, it just keeps, it keeps writing on there.
So right now we have planning and zoning, board of adjustment, veterans affairs, historic preservation of pioneer cemetery commissions. You'll all either have a vacancy or potential vacancy soon.
Correct. Before the, before the end of June.
But like, so like there, like the zoning one, so. That's what I'm asking. We know we have a vacancy. How long are we waiting? Do you give it a month? Do you give it three months before we fill the, if you get applications before we fill them vacancies?
If we get an application, we don't.
Well, I just, I don't wanna fill it right away if you only get one applicant and, you know, do you leave it vacant for a month or two months and then?
Well, usually there's a set time, like it's advertised for a few weeks, but if it goes beyond that few weeks and you get an applicant, it's usually that, that point. The way I've seen in the past becomes that first come, first served.
Right, I get that, I get that part if it's been vacant for.
A month or two, so.
Then look for people that. For veterans affairs, but this lady is not qualified for that position. So that's the next thing we have to do with if they're not, they're eligible for that position, so.
I'm sure I should review them. So again, yeah, if we get applicants, we, we'd like to review them also, so.
Right, yep.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Alright, the man, the maid. I got ahold of Andrew. He texted me. He can be here at ten. So, uh. Any boards or commissions need to report?
Uh, we had a state meeting. And, uh, we did, at a district six meeting, that went well. Uh, we got a lot of new faces. Uh, there was a lot of new, uh. Faces after the election last fall, so, um, went well and, uh. No, I mean, it was good collaboration again at, at state level to. Rub shoulders and talk, talk business and. But, uh, so far, I believe.
No, not really. I mean, the state meeting, they did talk about, a little bit about the mental health and. And how that's all going and, um, Director Garcia talked a little bit about the other. Departments that may be kind of steering in the same directions as that. So, more to come on all of that, obviously, as we all know.
Well. With that, I would go ahead and, I'll go ahead and recess here for, take a quick recess. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the Jackson County Board of Supervisor meeting. Um, next with us is Andrew Lung for an update on the jail. How we doing, sir?
Good morning, how are you guys? Logging here so I can get some information. Um, so currently as of today, we are at twenty-six inmates. Um, eleven of those are Jackson County and fifteen are Scott County. We have eleven of our own males, zero of our own females, um, six males from Scott County and nine females from Scott County. Um, January, we had a high of twenty-nine inmates, um, averaged twenty-one, twenty-eight, one per day. Uh, the exciting news is that we, I just sent a bill, uh, at the end of last week. For January to Scott County, it was thirteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Worth what little bit we had from. December that takes us up to this year, so far fourteen thousand two hundred forty-five dollars of revenue. Uh, but the fifteen we've had in since the first, so far this month, we're at three thousand three hundred, so. Not doing too bad there. Um, in general, just have an overview of the month, so we booked in thirty-seven people. Uh, correctional officers documented fifty-two thousand one hundred ninety-seven checks of inmates. Uh, five thousand six hundred and fifty-two specific inmate notes. Uh, prepared one thousand six hundred and seven meals. Administered seven hundred and thirty-seven meds, so. Keeping them running, um. Just some outstanding facility issues, um. I think you guys were. Apprised of the fact that we hadn't made the tore apart, the door to the padded cell. Uh, they were there this week working on that. I believe they still have to come back yet. They said it's kind of a process to do it. Um, so.
It wasn't, they're like missing a trim piece on the bottom.
Yes, yep, yep. So, um, from when we checked it out, it's not sealed at the bottom of either door. So that padded cell has two doors and the bottom's not sealed on either one. Um, when I talked to Hanson, he was like, well, I don't know if that's covered under warranty or not. Um, I guess my opinion is if they sealed it on every other part of the door, I don't know why they didn't do that. Um, so I talked to Keys a little bit about that. Um, and the potential that, you know, it does have to go to some sort of litigation because if they didn't do it properly. You know, we wanna address that rather than us pay for it because I'm sure it's not gonna be cheap.
Well, obviously, my second inmate we had in there tore the door apart and, and there's something obviously wrong.
There's a faulty somewhere.
Right, so I, I mean, I, I don't have to be rocket science to figure out if he tore it off or somebody tore it off, then it's gonna happen again.
And this wasn't a complete mental health episode of someone going nuts. This was a nineteen-year-old kid doing it to do it. So if a nineteen-year-old can do it just for fun. Obviously, someone that's in there that's, you know, full-blown combative is gonna tear that place apart very quickly.
No, there's cameras in there.
One camera, yep, yep, covers the whole cell. We have one camera. Um, do have the video of that, uh, the gentleman that did it was charged with second degree criminal mischief. Um, so there's potential getting restitution, however, he's got. Forceful felony charges for us, he's got forceful felony charges out of Lynn County that. He's probably gonna go to prison for a little while and I doubt we'll ever see anything bad from him, um, I'm sure he'll go to the. Victims of his other crimes before it would go to us, so, um, in the event restitution is ordered, I doubt we'll ever see it. Um, they've had some few issues with the dishwasher not functioning quite right. Um, Sarah Knight, who kind of runs all of our kitchen stuff, has been in communication with the dishwasher uh. Manufacturer is also the chemical supplier, um, they're kind of both pointing their finger at each other, so. I think her plan is try to tell them, hey, come here together at the same time and work out.
Works about.
Whose issue it is because they keep pointing the finger. Um, otherwise, the majority of the issues we've had, Jeff has been handling, uh, thankfully, he has better. Knowledge of the physical plant than I do, and I tell you, I operate a jail, but how to fix stuff is. A little bit beyond me, so, he's been handling a lot of that, I'm very thankful to him for doing that. Um, the door people, uh, Stronghold have been back and working on some doors that have kind of given us issues. I think some of that's just the changes in weather, you know, causing a little bit of swelling on the door, that kind of thing, um. The plumbers have been there a couple of times, we had uh same one that actually tried to, or did tear apart padded cell, decided to try to clog the toilet and flood the cell. Hanson told us, oh, you can't clog these toilets or flood them, we found out very quickly you can, there was about an inch and a half of water throughout the whole cell within. About a two-minute time span, so.
Did you leave a minute, or can you do that, I mean?
Not technically, we can't, no. Yeah, it's a. Certain variety, but unfortunately, we just can't, um. We had another issue in the pad, so we had a, again, very clearly a mental health type situation, uh, smirder feces all over it, so. We got the joy of cleaning that up for the first time, um, so that poor cell's gone through some abuse already. But um, otherwise, you know, for the most part, things are running fairly smooth. Um, things have been coming up, we've been kind of keeping Jeff in the loop and Jeff's been, you know, reporting to Hanson. Um, keeping on top of Hanson, so for the most part, things are running fairly smoothly.
So we've been in, uh, him, we've been informed about him and Hanson and the, and the form you gotta fill out and the procedure you gotta go through and. It's 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 kind of painful sometimes to try to get it all done and. And uh, get an answer back.
Oh, yeah.
It it is, he also, it says to me that some of these issues, obviously, he thought were warranty and. When they're kind of bucking the system a little bit, but they, you know, I mean, we're open for two months here, you know, well, went into service two years ago, well, it it really did go into service two years ago, you know.
Oh, absolutely. Um, do we know exactly when our warranty ends?
John sent an email out where there were specific dates for each company when it was accepted as. Substantially completed, and it's between September and December of last year is when. The dates for each company was accepted as substantially complete, so.
That's been when the warranty started, not when, whenever they put it in, it wasn't open and never.
Never got used for a year, I mean, that's not.
And that might, I might have that email and I got buried, um, I'll have to look for it, but yeah, so.
Uh, we had. That to us the last time he was here? Or the time before?
So I'm hearing two different things, um, because I did bring those forms into the board, um, the forms of substantial completion and. On each individual contractor, there was a date.
Right.
But I'm, was told just recently that what they're looking at is the date of occupancy that we received from the fire marshal. Is our date, because specifically when it came to the uh washing machine.
So is that, do you recall, was that August or September?
No, it's like, no, it's that, then that would be like.
That's the last time Delbert came back and actually gave us a stamp.
That's the stamp when we get start putting prisoners.
But we had the fire marshal occupancy before the open house.
Oh, I guess fire marshal or jail inspector.
Well, so that's what, because the question became, you had some issues with the dishwasher, no, excuse me, washing machine?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what was said, is you know, it may have been installed in April, but we didn't open up until November and it didn't get used and. So that, that was just a conversation that I had had with Jeff. So he said that they were supposed to go with that, Delbert's occupancy, that's when the jail was considered to be open.
Okay.
But yet I know that when I brought those substantial completion forms in, there are some September.
Each company had their own September, I think there was one August date, there was a couple of Septembers, October, November.
So it does kind of create an issue.
I know, yeah, and so I'm trying to go back.
They can, it should obviously last longer than, well, since we've been using it, so I'm just saying.
Well, absolutely.
The piping that was kind of blowing apart, did they get that rectified?
That has been fixed, um, since I think they just tightened it back on, um.
And six months it'll bolt apart again.
Yeah, so we'll probably be in the same boat eventually, um, but they did come and look at that, uh, we also had some issues earlier um in January where. Different cells, their toilets were getting clogged up, um, didn't seem like anything being done intentionally, it just seemed like there were some sort of issues. Um, C pod, there was some, quite a bit of leaking that was going on, so uh Kraus did fix that. Um, but yeah, otherwise, that plumbing is just kind of there, he said, he kind of told Hanson, that's not the best route to go. As far as that pipe that blew apart, he said, he had told Hanson, that's not the best route to go, but.
He put it in.
Yeah. So I don't know how that works.
Well, he said that.
Yeah.
That seems just weird because I'm sure John didn't say you got put in.
This kind of plumbing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So possible, he's just saying it as a CYA to him or to, you know. Oh, not my fault, but. Yeah, so no issue since then.
Know what he was putting in.
Well, uh, the plumber and John are both working for us.
Right, yeah. So by and large, everything running smooth?
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, no new issues as of today, anyway, there's nothing not really functioning as of right now. Um, they came and worked on the bench that was falling off the uh cinder block wall.
Okay.
Uh, so that's taken care of, um, like I said, I think the padded cell, they have to do like another coat or something on it yet, but. Nothing uh glaring not working right now anyway, so hopefully stays that way. With any luck. Yeah, um, otherwise, that's.
Taking in the other inmates is going okay?
It is, yeah, so we had, um, we took in eight from Scott County on Friday, eight females. Um, and we were able to do it in about a two to three hour time span, um. We prepared for as much as we could beforehand, they sent us the basic information on the people, we entered it in the computer system early on. Um, now, if it's a busy day, you know, that might slow the process down, um, but in that particular case, we were able to kind of prep it as much as possible. Um, we called in one extra person to kind of help with the process of booking and showering them and getting them into a cell, um. So I mean, in the course of them, let's say three to four hours, we actually booked in a total of nine people, showered in eight and bonded out one, uh, and served dinner. So, pretty smooth, um. Essentially, what we did was we had them pull into the satellite port, I was in the kind of handcuff bench area, um, entered as much information as I could. Um, once the next one was done in booking, they went in there, got searched, they uh finished the booking questions, um, and then the next crew kind of showered them in and. Made it pretty smooth, so I was happy with how well it worked. Smoother than the last time, the last time took longer, um, but we didn't have the information ahead of time either.
Right.
So I was happy though with how much more smoothly this time went as far as just the efficiency of it.
And I'm sure every time you get a group, it's gonna. Flow better.
Oh, yeah.
Get, get a system going or?
The more uh experience we have with it, the better, and I think taking in inmates has been uh beneficial too, and the fact of it's, you know, they're. Getting used to being busier, they're getting used to dealing with more inmates or testing the capabilities of cooking and, you know, the laundry and all that, so. Um, yeah, so far, so good, I think it's going well.
Good, sounds good.
Glad to hear it.
We know where our phone goes, that's in the lobby, we know where it get answered, is it under in somewhere?
Yeah, I think so now. That thing's about ten times more complicated than it needs to be.
No doubt.
Yeah, so I think that's uh finally up and running fairly well with stuff, so I'm happy.
Good, so glad to hear it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, other than that, I think that's all I have unless you guys have any questions on it, so.
No, just uh every, you know, three, four months, give us an update on how things are going and all that kind of stuff, we appreciate that, I think. At least for the first year or so, because I think people are really curious to see how the facility is working, so.
Absolutely.
To hear that we got, what you said, uh, twenty-six inmates as of right now and fifteen of them from outside the county, so that's, that's working.
Well, and I guess one other thing to note too, and and going back on January, if we were still in our old facility, we would have spent a little over ten thousand dollars shipping out. Based on the numbers we had in Jackson County, so I mean, when you figure.
That's a twenty-three thousand dollar split swing, when you figure we gained thirteen and. Ten would spend that, yeah, well, ten, but not like we're doing it for nothing, but is at least balancing.
And we have males and females, so obviously, we're not shipping out.
Or females.
Anybody right now. And not to say that that couldn't happen if we didn't have females from another county, we're not gonna take up a whole cell with one female, obviously.
And and we actually got to that point for a little while where we just had one female from Scott County tying up a pod, and that's. How we end up getting the other ones is because of, hey, you know, either come get this gal or bring us some more because. We don't want to tie up a twelve-person pod with an out-of-county female.
Right.
Um, and then then after we kind of, you know, put a little pressure on them that way, that's when they brought us the next eight, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Have a good one, guys.
I'm coming over.
No problem.
Hey, Jack.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Where's yours?
So, uh, we're reporting on the governing board meeting that was held on January twenty-seventh. Um, we started talking with David Farmer and the budget. With that, um, Robert Young Center is ending their contract. At the end of February with us, which is gonna give us a savings of two hundred and fifty thousand a month. Which will help our budget immensely, uh, it look, as of right now, with estimates. By June thirtieth, we'll still be in the positive, however, as the late bills come through the July, they're still anticipating, um. It's about a two hundred thousand dollar deficit, but we'll see how um things kind of play out with what bills actually come in. And then we'll see where that goes. With the Robert Young Center contract ending, they had about five agencies that they had subcontract with. So we're currently working on um getting those subcontracts put in place and developed, they're right now. Lori Elam has them with the lawyer and um those will go out so they can begin on March first. So.
Their services will not stop.
So this is like a stopgap thing until July first, when the new thing takes over?
Yeah, so it's to keep those all in place. Keep them funded and uh, yeah, keep services going. Um, and then.
Two hundred thousand dollar gap, I mean, did we apply for like, did we apply before for some funding?
From the state?
That's, yeah.
They requested funding and that was something that they said they wouldn't be able to do unless legislative um did something about that. And um as last we heard, they are not currently gonna be giving us any money. However, um, we'll see how the budget goes, but if um. You know, we're past that June thirtieth date and we're getting in late bills, they'll probably have to, and we are out of money, I would imagine it would go to the new ASO. Um, and they would cover those because if they're not gonna give us any money to pay for them, I'm not sure how else that would.
Kind of funny, in our meeting last week. They mentioned that the only, they they got this reserve fund, but the only person that really qualifies for it is the people in Des Moines.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, because they did set aside some money so that if we had shortfalls, we could tap into that, that fund.
But no, she just made it sound, and I've had a really hard time sitting there.
Yeah.
Not going irate on her because she made it sound like nobody's asking for it except for Pope coming. And I'm like.
Well, we have asked for it, we have asked for it.
Yeah.
We've asked for it and um their only justification that um Lori has come back and said is that uh they feel our administration cost is too high. Well, part of that administration cost was the Robert Young Center, um, so now that we're not paying for them, our admin, our administration cost is way down. So, but it doesn't show on the books, it won't show on the books until March, so I'm not sure how that'll look as far as.
With the, with the Robert Young out of the picture, so we're dealing direct with the contractor with, so with the providers of service. Honestly, maybe we should have been doing that all along, is that what they're saying or what?
Except Robert Young did, for, for, you know, they produced a lot of services for us and services that. Um, our people really need, like crisis services, they handled all of that and got the contracts and um. I was really sorry when they said, and obviously, I understand why they are doing it because of. July first, right around the corner, but uh they um, they did a lot of stuff.
And to give you a little bit of background, so Robert Young, um, they provide the co-responders, the jail-based coordinator, the care coordinators, and they're still gonna provide those. Uh, but they're gonna be eating that cost for, so part of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings isn't just administration costs. That is actually direct service cost in there as well, and um, so they're gonna continue to provide that, however, they've had some people who have quit. And they're not gonna fill those positions until July one, when they begin with their grant funding through C C B H C.
Cause we do have our co-responder.
We do presently.
Cause the whole thing is, a lot of those people, when they saw the handwriting on the wall, they started looking for other positions.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta protect our own families.
Yeah.
Um, well, yeah, I think we had the discussion when you applied.
Yes, and uh Taylor is our co-responder and our uh jail-based coordinator presently, and she is applying through Robert Young to stay with them. Um, the concerning thing that we're not sure of is what's gonna look like July one. Uh, as far as the rules have come out for uh the ASO. And in the ASO, it has a list of all the services they're gonna cover. And it's a pretty comprehensive list, but there were two things that weren't in there that we currently do, and that was the co-responders and R C Fs. So we're not sure if those were kind of oversights or if those are things that they're not gonna cover.
According to the meeting that we were at last week. Director Garcia says that they were not to be cou- covered under that. That it wasn't, it wasn't a slip-up.
Okay.
Is what she said, was that they did not have intentions at this time of covering that.
Okay. And so with the co-responder, not sure if that's gonna be able to be covered through the Robert Young Center under through the C C B H C, they'd have to do um some title difference thing, you know. It'd have to be under care coordinator type thing, um, but still kind of provide that service, um, hoping because that. Has been a very valuable service in Jackson County, um, they, they, that's probably been the most valuable um. Program that we have here, I think, with the mental health, um, and like in December, you know, they served forty-two people. Um, through that program, and so uh it would be a huge loss if they don't continue with that, and I know our officers.
And obviously, yeah, we had two of our COCO officers at a meeting and they just. They, they just sang the praises of that because they aren't trained as, as well as they could be.
So are these officers getting through to the hierarchies uh that are, what now is?
J T's trying.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, we have to have, we have to have the guys with boots on the ground that are using this service, say, hey, you wanna ride with me, go ahead.
Yeah.
You know, let's find a place for you.
So, um, we'll see, and then the other interesting thing though is in the draft, it does say, um, at the very end. Additional services deemed necessary for a district or statewide as determined by the District Behavioral Health Service System Plan. And approved by the department, which Lori thought was very interesting because that's kind of why they wanted to get away from regions, because we all do things differently. While with this uh W, with the. While with this, uh, W, with the additional services deemed necessary, districts can look different.
Well, obviously, districts are different.
Oh, absolutely.
So that was interesting that they.
That's just Lori covering their backside.
Yeah.
And I left this meeting to go to ECI and find out that ECI, their, their new district is the same as the mental health district. The fourteen counties is the ECI district.
Hmm.
So we don't know how that's gonna play out and Mary was just, Mary Worth was just really knew it.
Really worried about the rural counties.
Yes, yeah.
And JT's gonna try to get on the advisory board for the ASO, so he's applying for it. I don't know if he'll get it or not, but he really wants to have a rule, um.
Voice, that's good, and we should have.
Yes, so we'll see, he'll keep us posted if he gets on the advisory board or not, but I'm very hopeful because he will, um, advocate.
Will certainly be able to shed a light.
Yeah. The other thing that was in this draft is that it does cover, um, jail-based behavioral health treatment and meds in jail. Um, so hopefully that'll come back and ASO will cover those because definitely we're not, um, covering that. This is a draft, though I mean, it's all subject to change yet, but, um, I think it should be a pretty good guide of what.
I would think so, yes.
I wouldn't talk about that too, Mark, cause she said at the meeting, Director Garcia last week was like, no.
Right, it's in the draft.
She was talking about the whole allowing them to keep any Medicaid, Medicare.
Oh.
Type of thing, not, not necessarily mental health.
Okay.
Alone, but all the other.
The insurance piece.
Right.
Got you.
That's what she wasn't.
Yeah. Which is.
Everybody says it's like a federal thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what she was saying, and she goes, and I don't see that as something we're gonna fight for right now. Of course, everybody kind of, as we were told six times during the. Three-hour meeting beforehand to be honest, when she was up there, like we're a bunch of two-year-olds.
You can't handle the heat of your job while you have.
Wasn't her or some other department management that was there last time that she refused to come back.
Oh, wow. Well, and the other interesting thing on here too is it does give a provision for a waitlist. So, uh, that's kind of interesting because they were, really didn't want a waitlist for the region. Um, so, but there is a, a spot in here for waitlisting folks, um, in there as well.
We've tried very hard to not have a waitlist and provide the services, and now when they say you can have one, I just really bothers me.
So, and then, um, one good thing is of course the ASO, that's for the mental, mental health and for the folks with, um, substance abuse. The disability access point, the DAP, that's for our folks with disability, disa- disability, um, developmental disability, brain injury and intellectual disability. Um, that Lori and they also applied for statewide and they just had their interview, um, January twenty-eighth. Um, and there were other, I think there was four or five other regions, four regions that also applied and had interviews with that. So there's still a possibility of, um, some services coming through for that population through the DAP. And so that'll look a little bit different as well. And we'll keep you posted on them.
Have they always been separated like that?
No, so it used to be substance abuse was on its own, and then mental health was with the BIDD and ID.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and now they decided to, to break the mental health away from that and put it with the substance abuse, because those do, uh, co-mingle. Uh, honestly, I have a feeling that eventually all of them will come back together as a whole, but they just didn't want to put it all together at this.
And it makes sense that they're all together.
Because you treat the whole person, not just a piece of.
You're serving the client and you need to meet all their needs, not just handpick what you want to do.
Right.
Keep up a good fight.
All we can do.
A good fight, yeah.
Waiting for July first.
I appreciate it.
Thank you much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, have a good day. You too, also.
And as we wrap up today's meeting, I just want to throw out, I've seen several things on social media and I've heard throughout the county that there's been a. A rash of dog abductions. Where dogs are being stole from farmhouses and. Being collars cut off. About a month or two later, the dog comes back to the owner, dropped off in there in rather dire medical condition where they've been. For the last one I heard about it, all cut up, disemboweled, barely alive. Drop back off the owner's property, I guess they're being stolen, speculation is they're taking to be training dogs for fighting rings or something. And then they have to dispose of the dog because it usually dies within a few hours of it come back, I've heard of like three or four cases over the last six months, but, uh. I just ask the people of Jackson County to be diligent, be observational, look and see what's going on because it's quick. They found the collar cut off in the driveway or in their yard. And then they come home and find the dog just laid back in there, they bring the dog back to the owners where they stole.
Which is weird that they even.
Right, but, you know, that's almost adding insult to injury.
Right, right.
And so, the last one I heard of, he got to spend about twenty hours with his dog before it died, it was a great big dog, beautiful, friendly dog. So, uh, I'm just asking, we put it out in the press a little bit, does people be diligent? Diligent and observe your surroundings and look for strange vehicles driving around because it's going on. It, it's, you know, and it's, it seems like it's becoming more prevalent, so we just need to keep a keen eye out for it.
That's awful.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting?
Make the most of my adjourn.
I'll second.
Got to most my mic, second my name to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a wonderful day, everybody.